All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the flagging allegiance?
My flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 11, 2022, meeting of the Westport Select Board. First on that order, we have, first is acknowledgements and recognitions. I'm not aware of any. Do you know them?
The only one I would have is that on the 22nd of October, we will be doing a fundraiser for gnome syrup, which helps out a lot of people with varying levels of ability in water therapy at Buzzers Bay Brewery, and it's in honor of a friend of ours who was a huge supporter of them, and he passed away suddenly, Greg Morris. That will be on Saturday, the 22nd, from 12:30 to 8:00 or so at Buzzers Bay Brewery. Just wanted to mention that, supporting a really great cause, gnome syrup is an amazing organization.
Yeah, all of them, because they're like watching the all the stuff they do.
Yeah, they're amazing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the first item we have is a public hearing. So we have a petition from National Grid requesting permission to install one SO pole on Briggs Road beginning at a point approximately 25 feet south of the centerline of the intersection of Briggs Road to install new pole 8-1 to serve customer National Grid number 30584896 due to September 6, 2022. It's my understanding that we have someone dialed in for this request?
I'm actually here.
Oh, you're here.
I have another link, so I just had to drive over an hour to get here.
Do you want to sit down? We moved the trip chairs. Those are like regular working chairs.
Yeah, yes.
You usually tell people to be careful when they sit down. Well, but you can tell people to be careful when they sit down. So we do have some materials. Can you just say that for yourself for us, please?
Yes, Al Galvin, design engineer, National Grid Electric.
Great, thank you. And do you just want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing over there?
Yes, it's a new residential customer needed service. The pole line happens to be on the opposite side of the road from their home, so we had to install a new pole in line with which side of the house they wanted their line to connect on, which faced the home as a left. So that was a mid-span tap off the cable line up there. So the designer actually even spoke to the neighbor as well and moved it over per their request. So it was a little further away from their driveway. But I guess it's just about, I think it was 30 feet off the pole line that's out there now. Put a new pole in and then they can have a service drop to the house for them.
Are there any questions? Is there anybody here in the others?
I'll move.
One second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. There you go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for grabbing that.
I don't know if there are both people.
There's ice cream place at the road, there's pizza at the road. License and permits, paper requests from the Holy Ghost Club at 179 Sudden Road for a one-day all alcohol beverage license for a scala dinner on Friday, October 14, from 5:00 to 10:00. Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Yeah, the scala dinner, I'm sorry.
This is easy.
Appointments of resignation. We have a request from Marie Fontaine to be appointed to the Council on Aging Board.
I'll move it. One second.
Any discussion?
I just would point out, Madam Chair, that I was at the Council on Aging this morning. I'll talk about that later. And Marie's been there for the last two meetings. I think she's a well-qualified candidate, and I give her my highest recommendation.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Do you have one absent? We have a request from Chief Pelletier to reappoint Michael Chika as a full-time officer.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request from Sue Breiten, the treasurer collector, to appoint Stella Varius as a payroll benefits tax title specialist effective October 13, 2022. Jim, can you, Stella or?
Sue Breiten was over there.
So Jim, do you want to just like tell us what's going on, because there's gonna be a cascade effect here?
Yeah, so Stella's currently the assistant town clerk. She's gonna move over to the treasurer's office and take the new position there. She's agreed to work with the town clerk in the next election, in the 11th election, so they'll share their duties over the next three weeks, four weeks. Sue Breiten was here. I don't know. She must have stepped out, or the woman walked too fast. But it's pretty straightforward, and you know Stella's worked out great. She's been in the number departments, number of the financial departments, so she was there before us. So she can put it right in. We recommend approval.
And this isn't the first. We've discussed this as a board. We knew this was probably something anyway, so I'm gonna move it.
Second.
Any discussion?
There she is, hey!
We've moved to second and appointing Stella as your payroll and tax specialist.
Sorry for the surprise.
We were about to vote, but here you are. So we thought we'd see if you have any words to say about it.
No, but I just appreciate that you voted her in.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have one absent. You didn't have anything else on the agenda here, did you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Go have dinner. The next item that we have on here is a request from Matt Armando to appoint a transfer station attendant, and he's asked that we skip over this one. So we're gonna take this one up on the next meeting on October 24. We're E. We have a request from Chris Gonzalez, the highway surveyor, to appoint Gary Ferry as a mechanic operator effective October 13. Jim, do you want to tell us about this one?
Yeah, the position was posted on August 18, 2022. I believe he's worked there before. I worked for the town. Chris was excited to get him, so I recommend approval. Difficult position to fill over at the highway department, so.
They still have other positions, right? They haven't filled yet.
They do.
Why are we going back? One second. I was surprised that he left.
So your motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Did anyone see if Bernadette was out in the hallway? So the next item, we have a request from Bernadette Oliver, the town clerk. I'm gonna wait for her, because she's got a few things on the agenda. So we're gonna skip until we see her. So we're gonna skip, we're gonna, we'll come back to it. Let's skip to 5C. So 5C is the Chapter 61A released for 278 Drift Road, map 52, Lot 28. Parshals A and B is shown in the A and R Plan Book 184, page 12. Jim, do you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, so this is the parcel of land that's located between Drift Road and the town-owned, they call it the gravel pit, down next to the river. Ideally, it'd be a great parcel for the town to pick up. It would increase the value of the property down near the river, but there's no funding source identified right now to buy it. We really don't have, I don't have any options at this point to buy it. You know, it's one of those things I'd love to get, but I don't think we can do it at this point.
Well, do, I'm just wondering if any of the Harper funds could be expended for, because many years ago, there was a study done on different parcels in town that had suitable soil for a cemetery. And the gravel pit down there on Drift Road, we used for a shooting range, was one of the properties identified that had the proper soil for a cemetery. And I'm assuming that a property that abuts it may also have similar soil content, because they're all within the fluvial depositary layer, same layer. So it's probably gonna be similar soil content. I don't know that, you know, how much longer do we have to exercise our way to first refusal on this?
Paul, do you know the date? I think we're getting pretty close.
Yeah, 27, I think.
27.
Nice. So can we take this up at our next meeting? Because really, it's a funding source problem.
Yeah, it's a funding source issue, but this is a, this is a property. Is it, is it being sold? Is it already under agreement?
It's under agreement right now.
It's under agreement already, and that they have a, we have a?
We're looking at about $350,000.
$350,000. So for short money, how many acres is this? Do we know? Do we remember?
It's got minimal frontage. I think it has just enough, maybe 150 feet of frontage. Consider one lot, it provides access to the town.
It provides access to the town property.
Which will maintain easement regardless.
If we, it can somehow, I mean, really, you know, this is, this one's, this one could be critical, you know, to our future. And I don't believe it's developed, or is it?
It is not. There's a field in the back.
Yeah, it's, there's no house on it.
There's some wetlands on it, but there is some.
Yeah, but there's no house, there's nothing. And it would, again, I was, I've spoken about this before at previous meetings, that, you know, we are desperately gonna be in need of more cemetery land. And again, that parcel has been identified as having the perfect soil conditions for that, the right amount of sand, the right amount of gravel, the right amount of water table at the proper, you know, level. So I would ask, yeah, at least if we can hold off. I know the planning board had recommended, I believe this one, the planning board had recommended, or not the planning board, the?
Yeah, Ag Open Space.
Ag Open Space.
They recommended that we exercise it, but they didn't identify a source of funding.
Okay. And I missed, unfortunately, I was not at that meeting. So I would like to just at least weigh in from them and see if there's something that we might be able to.
All right, so we'll pass, we'll pass over that one and take that up on October 24. And town clerk is here, so Bernadette, do you want to answer? So we're skipping back to 3F?
Sorry, I didn't expect you to go so fast.
We're speaking today.
Racing right along.
Monday, we're gonna have Monday night football. We're trying to get to tonight. So 3F is we have a request, the town clerk, to post the assistant town clerk position. We just appointed Stella to go away from you, so now you want to post the position. So is that what you're gonna take?
Well, the question would be if you allow us to post. I don't know if you want to do it simultaneously, or at least if no one in-house applies for us to be able to go outside without having to come back to another meeting.
Yeah, we usually do two weeks first, and then in-house, and then after that, we post.
Well, I think it's.
Usually it's a week, right?
It's seven days, I think.
Seven days, okay.
Sometimes we post, we advertise at the same time. We still have to give the seven days for the union, but.
And they get first.
He says we can't. I'd recommend posting and advertising.
I'll move it that way.
So we're moving to post and advertise for the assistant clerk position. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Just wanted to note that in this box, it's a point. Welcome.
I was late.
I'm gonna skip down, because you have a couple of other items, or at least, yeah, you have a couple of items on there. So I'm skipping to 5A. So 5A is a request from the town clerk for an increase in the election stipend. So can you tell us what this is about?
Okay, so I get a stipend for each election, because there's a lot of work to an election. We trace back as far as 1978, and in 1978, the town clerk at the time was getting paid $144 per election, and actually, that's a copy of one of the payroll sheets that says $144 supervising state election. So 44 years later, and I did send or post to you all the changes that have occurred in the election process. We've gone from a three-step in-person process to a 12-step by mail for a lot of people. Right now, for this election, we're up to 2,730 people who have requested mail-in ballots. The amount of work involved is incredible, and I'm still getting $144 per election, just like the town clerk was 44 years ago.
So what are you asking for?
I'm asking for $300 for town elections, because there's not as much work. But if you were to just, just consider the increase in wages over those years, I think we'd be at least there. And the amount of work that goes into the primary and state elections, I think that $600 would be a fair amount.
And do you have that in the budget for the current fiscal year?
Yes.
And then you're planning to budget for in the next?
Right, it does come out of the elections and registrations budget, and there is money to cover that in that budget.
Do you have any questions?
Just, it's okay for us to do that, because this is a stipend and not her set salary, correct?
It's the way some of these other communities have handled it.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just had a question, Bernadette. On the voting by mail, little box you have here, it has election 1618 AV, EV. I wasn't sure what all that was.
AV is absentee voting, EV is early voting. It's basically the same thing, but the state keeps it separate, because it comes from two different areas in the law. So absentee has been in place for, as far as I know, for people who are not in town the day of the election. The early voting is the newest thing that started back in 2020.
Okay.
Or 20, just before 2020.
I can't remember there ever not being absentee ballots. We had to have a reason, but we were always given money, you know, if you weren't gonna be in town.
All right, so we have motion in a second to increase the stipends for Bernadette. Is there any further discussion?
The request was also for it to be retro to cover this September primary that we just had.
I'll make it effective immediately. Retroactive for the primary and going forward.
All right, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Can you just tell us a little bit about early voting, if there's anything the voters should know? I know we're gonna talk about the ballot in a second, but.
Well, the voters should know that we don't have the ballots yet. We've been getting a lot of phone calls from people wondering where the ballot is. We can't send them a ballot until we've gotten them. We should have them by the end of the week.
Did you send us the ballot? I'm trying to find the ballot itself, because the next item we have on the agenda is a request to approve the November 8, 2022 election warrant.
I didn't send them the ballot.
So do you have, so that on the warrant, we have the state elections for governor, representative, senator, miscellaneous secretary of state, lieutenant governor, that kind of thing. The reason I was, I had forgotten personally that the diamond override vote is on the November ballot. So I really want to just make sure people know that we've got these big state elections coming up, and, but the diamond override vote is on the warrant.
Question five.
Question five.
It's the last question.
So question five is, is, that's the only local vote, right?
Yes, yes. All the other ones are the state questions that people would have gotten in that red booklet.
So, so the request is to approve the November 8, 2022 election warrants.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. I think those are both all of yours, Bernadette. Is there, do you have others?
No, nothing changes. They just need to sign it. That's, well, the way it should be.
Do we know when the new ballots are, I mean, I know it's a?
I'm sorry.
Do we know when the ballots are gonna be available?
Like I said, they, they're supposed to be delivered by the end of the week.
End of week, okay.
Yeah.
And then when does early voting start? When can people start?
We have early voting on Saturday, October 22 and 29, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then the two weeks, weekday, weeks in between, Monday through Friday, for both weeks, it's 8:30 to 4:00, downstairs in the town hall basement.
Anything else for Bernadette while we had her? And that was everything that you had. Did you have anything else?
Yes, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go back. So I guess around 4. So 4, I was just looking to see if people here could add or let's go down. We don't have Chris Leonard in here. All right, so this, so 4A. So 4A is the 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. So basically, every other Monday, impossible to avoid your Monday holidays. Anybody have any, any thoughts about it?
I think it was good, it just buffles around major holidays, so.
Yeah. All right, so do we need to approve the schedule, or we just, this is just information? Do we need to vote on it?
They normally vote.
Okay.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request from the Cable Advisory Board. So I don't know who else is talking, but whoever it is, please come up. Your request from Irene Buck of the Cable Advisory Board to discuss Westport cable license.
I was talking about you earlier, all excited about those emails from the state.
Yeah.
Mailboxes.
Mom, damners everywhere.
It's illegal.
I'm the, I'm playing the Irene Buck role tonight as the assistant chair of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Okay, and then we have also the, Renee, government?
Yeah. Good evening.
So basically, what this is about, it's trying to be read by, you see, it's a several-page agenda. The Cable Advisory Committee, as you know, is advisory to you folks. And the next year, the cable renewal contract is up. And what we've been doing is, we've had a public hearing last year, and we've been working on a brief set of recommendations. There's a draft report to you right there. So rather succinctly, as you know, over the past couple of years in the COVID outbreak, the cable community system has really played an important role in governance. It's been the people's access to its government. And we've looked at a growing education role, and John Zanese runs that for us, as she has said. And so at the high school, there's a studio lab, they run the studio lab, they're training kids to be, both to do programming and also to actually be the camera people that are meeting some things. So long and short of it is, we should renew the contract. There's probably no point in trying to find a new provider. And we've made a couple of, three recommendations. The most important is probably to, sometime soon, to engage an attorney that could help you with that. So with that, Renee and I have been sort of working on the draft of this and putting it together with the numbers and everything. And I'd like him to sort of tell you where we've landed.
Sure, good evening. Yeah, this has been a two-year process for us, where really, we've done an assessment of, of the existing cable license for the town of Westport and potentially what we can ask for with the new license, keeping in mind that we're forecasting 10 years out. We really don't know what technology is gonna be like 10 years out. We know that, and the board is aware, that the town is looking at a municipal fiber plant for connectivity. We don't know what the business of cable television will be like in 10 years. However, we do know that we have a very viable community access television program here in the town that we'd like to continue to fund. I think it's important that, not only from a historic perspective, but documentation of these meetings, you know, the school committee meetings, and then all the public access work and educational access work that is done by John and by Valerie. So the intent of our recommendations is, there are things that we know we can ask for, and then there are certain things that are non-negotiable, obviously, with, with, with any big company. But the things that we know we can ask for are listed here on the recommendations. And I think, as, as Bob alluded to, the intent is to secure some funding, to continue the programming that's being done here in the town, as well as, you know, potentially advancing some of the equipment and capital improvements that will need to be done over the next 10 years. There, obviously, I think it's important to have an attorney that, that knows cable television law. And we did see that the individual listed here on the recommendations did handle the initial cable license for the town back in 2013. So I've had some experiences with him, and I would recommend that, you know, if it's the will of the committee that we retain him and, and begin the process of negotiating our, our wish list here. Keeping in mind that there's obviously some things that, you know, we may not be able to get.
So it's, it's basically, in the negotiations, to look at what we've got before and what we think we'll be able to get again, is a capital contribution. And then also, the actual rate pays for John and Valerie and actually, actually provides the operating equipment for, or the operating monies for the system. So with probable declining ridership, we've recommended asking for a slight increase in the rate from 3.5% to 4%, still within the guidelines, and to increase slightly the capital contributions they made before. They made $102,000 before, and we're asking for $150,003,000. Basically, we're trying to build the, the actual physical capabilities to run programming. Some of that is transferable into our own future internet. So that's, that's the, those are our recommendations. And Renee was the chief pressman in our report, and so we decided to have the author join you.
So Steve, I know this is, you're, you're closer to somebody. Do you have any comments?
No, I think they did a lot of work, you know, I, I think it's reasonable, and, you know, especially with the upgrades, and, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have more meetings than the planning board a couple of weeks, but otherwise than that.
Word means all the time.
Yeah, we meet as much as we want. But no, you know, to go forward, they wanted to run it by you before going to legal, and from here, they go to legal, which is an accurate question.
So my understanding is the recommendation is to retain the KP law. You mentioned someone specific, their KP law, or some, that person.
Kill you.
Yeah, and then that we, that these are the initial kind of asks that we're making in that negotiation. So then, do you have a recommendation about who should participate in the negotiation? Obviously, I'm assuming yourselves, this is some of the cable advisors, but like, should we have a select board member participating, or how do you?
Yeah, if I can't make it, we should have at least Jim when it gets down to the nitty-gritty with the lawyer. Many select want to go, if I'm not available, you want to go on the second or whatever.
Because it's fine, my, my thought would be to have you, if you're willing, to work with whoever the cable is appointing, and have you guys work out the details, and then you just bring it back to us, unless somebody else goes.
No, ideally, I'd like an alternate in case there's any issues, if possible, that's all.
Okay, do you want to name an alternate now?
Well, if anybody's interested, if anybody's interested, if not, believe me. Does anybody want to be an alternate to meet with legal in case I can't make it or anything?
I'll blow them to here for them.
Okay, so we'll put Dick as an alternate.
All right, so, so we'll have, we'll have, remember, you guys are designating, work with Jim and Steve, I think as an alternate, to work on these negotiations. I think everybody's fine. Were there any comments on, or suggestions, or anything on what they recommend in here?
Yeah, a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to be clear, I think I know the answer to some of this, but we're talking here about renewing with charter. And the effective date would be June 7 of 2023. How long was the contract gonna be? 10 years?
10-year contract.
Well, okay, the first question I have is, we're making the assumption there's nobody else who can provide this service. And that's what I've always understood in the. else who can provide this service, and that's what I've always understood and assumed, but do we know that as a fact? And has that been checked out? Has there been any interest expressed by any other providers like Comcast or Verizon or whoever? Um, has there been any attempt to talk to them, see if there's any interest, or is it just assumed that they're not interested?
I've contacted them all through the years, and the only thing that stopped me is, is the MMA conferences, I used to hit them up every year, uh, at all the booths, plus make phone calls, but when you can corner them at the MMA, it was, it was easier to, to get out of there, know what's going on. Uh, so yes, we've contacted them through the years and nobody's had interest. The only interest there was is when there was the merger happening and nothing came out of it.
What merger is that?
Uh, Time Warner was going to get, I know they merged Spectrum with Charter, but there was going to be a bigger one, I think it was Time Warner.
A huge obstacle to anyone coming in is the fact that they pretty much have to buy or rent from Charter their infrastructure or put up their own infrastructure. And there's too small of, uh, clientele, basically, for them to be able to be profitable. So we literally, every time that we've tried to get someone else to bid, we get nothing.
But that's all in the past. I'm interested in, of late, with this cable committee in this negotiation, has there been an attempt made on our part to check with others, not just anecdotal things mentioned at conferences?
Oh, no, that was follow-up, I shouldn't say this, these emails and whatnot, but I'd say not within the last two years. Well, there was emails, there was phone calls, and I cornered them at the MMA, sorry if I made it sound like that was the only thing.
But one of them, don't they provide service to the harbor? That Comcast is a small group of people there?
They're very small, normal people that are getting serviced out of some company agency.
They bought Little Compton.
I also want to, I, also because I think a lot of people get this confused, this is only the cable TV part of the charter.
That's correct.
This is not included, the internet, the internet is outside of this, go ahead.
Well, do we need to talk about that or is that, maybe not with this committee because it's cable, but what about the internet part to this?
We have no agreement with them about, there's no, there is no contract with the town for an internet service provider.
When the contract was originally written, there wasn't internet.
Right.
It didn't really exist, so we didn't have to sign any exclusivity with them with internet. So there were a million different internet providers, and it was mostly done by DSL. So that's one advantage we have, building our network, is that we can provide that without having to compete with each other.
If I may follow up. Um, and it is a 10-year contract, and the world is spinning fast right around here as well. So the ways we can get out of this after five years, if some new type of technology shows up that's much more desirable or competitive or capable or more functionality, how do we get out of this, are we stuck for 10 years with?
So this, yeah, this is really just the, the license to the town. I think really it's going to be up to the consumers to go their different directions, right? I mean, for, for providers. When, um, when in fact, um, and if the, the town's internet and, and fiber plant is built, I think, um, you know, five, 10 years, maybe longer, um, other providers will come in, and I think it'll be up to the consumers to make those decisions.
So there's nothing in our arrangement with Charter that would prevent consumers at that point from making an alternative choice?
Correct.
Okay. And go go over again, this cable fee of 3.5 to 4%, that's a fee that they pay to us for doing business with them.
That's right.
And we want to increase it, and I, I get that.
Subscribers. Yeah, the subscribers do pay for that.
It, it all comes out of the rate base. Both the capital contribution and the, and the operating expenses, it truthfully come out of the rate base.
Those are passed throughs to the, to the subscriber. You have, you know, 25 cents on your cable bill or whatever the amount is, I think mine's like 45 cents, that's, that's added to the cable bill.
Well, I think we should just be clear on that, that this is, we're asking Charter then in this contract to charge more to the customers for this fee that goes to the town.
Correct.
I mean, I can't believe that would be controversial, but I think it's, should be pointed out.
Absolutely.
We might get questions then as to why are we asking them to increase our fees as customers?
Yes.
I'm a Charter customer.
I mean, currently, I, I believe the last time I checked, there are about, uh, 4,500 cable subscribers in Westport, so those subscribers would be footing the bill for this.
And when, my last question is, when do you want to have negotiations wrapped up and agreement reached, obviously before June 7th, but I mean, is this a January thing or February?
This is first of the year. Our, our goal was to, was to meet with you, the, the original goal was sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we would wrap up our report, we've actually finished it earlier, and get the recommendations to the board of selectmen, so that you could put in place the attorney, and then, uh, working with Steve as the representative, that we would be in negotiations in the first of the year and try and, I mean, it's a, I don't think it's a complicated rule, and there's two or three issues to talk about.
You suspect Charter would be looking for a substantial increase in fees to subscribers? Or is just what we see now?
It's been coming in November.
It's all approved by regulatory commissions.
Sure.
So on us and forth.
We don't regulate that.
Yeah, that's separate, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other discussion?
No, I'll send the board the communications, I, I was trying to think keywords quick to see if I can find the emails, just so they know, um, I have Mike, uh, Rodrickson and Paul Schmidt working on it too, because we were trying to get to the major wings with, with cable companies to see if we could get them, and we didn't, we didn't get any interest, unfortunately.
And we, we've actually reached out, uh, we, we invited them, we invited Charter to, to the public hearing we had, uh, last year, they said they were too busy, and, and we've also, uh, had an internet conversation with the attorney, so we've, we've, all of those bases have been touched during this, in this past six months.
Okay, so we had a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Al Baver?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I'm going to skip the budget discussion, because we have other people here for other stuff. Um, so we have, um, 5D, so 5D is a Chapter 61A release on Division Road and map 4812 Zero, described as parcel one on the deed, recorded in book 10479, page 252. Um, Jim, you want to tell us about this one?
Yes, this is a property belonging to Division Road, we do, um, all the departments signed off on the release, with the exception of the Conservation Commission, and I did speak with their chairperson and the agent, Chris Compon, and it was more that they were concerned that, um, there were some plans to develop the property, and the wetlands hadn't been flagged and located yet, but they did not identify a funding source, and it did not seem like it was something that they were really pushing hard to, um, preserve. So I, I, I would recommend, based on the other releases and approvals from the other departments, that the, the, um, possibly release from 61A.
I'll move that, we approve that release.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, just really quick, Jim, this isn't about town property or anything, like the others?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
A good chunk of it is wet.
Yeah, I see that, okay.
Uh, Al Baver?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Um, we have a request from General Landing Commission to first assign the contract to GZA, Geo Environmental Inc., out of Providence, Rhode Island, for the Hicks Bridge landing design. Want to tell us about this one, Jim?
Yes, so the Landing Commission, myself, met with, uh, we went off of proposals, and we had two or three companies apply to do this design work, this would be to redesign the parking area, as well as the boat ramp at Hicks Bridge Landing. The group recommended the Seaport, um, recommended the Geo Environmental Group, GZA, to do the work, they've done quite a bit of work similar to this in Massachusetts and in New England, a big company, uh, they seem very well-versed in what we were looking for, and, um, I'd recommend that the board approve the contract, the contract is for $111,000, $517, $111,000, $111,000, of which 76 will be, um, paid for through a Seaport Economic Development Grant, and the remaining $35,000 and change would be paid for from an earmark, an AP earmark through Representative Schmidt's office of $50,000. Now, this has been in the works for a while, um, the landing obviously needs improvement, so this would be the first step.
I'll move that.
Second.
Any discussion? Al Baver?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. I have, after you know, Chris was planning to be here today? No, all right, so we have a request from Chris Leonard, Marine Services Director, to open the baseball season on October 15, 2022.
That meets our question, doing it on weekends, some families and whatnot, but, um.
Second.
Any discussion? Al Baver?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Um, we have a request to fund, uh, the following requests with local or Bristol County American Rest and Recovery Plan Act funds, so a request from the Fire Department, um, for four-wheel drive, two four-wheel drive vehicles for $112,000, a pickup truck with a plow for $70,000, a question of the School Department for two multi-use passenger vans for $130,000, and the Planning Board for Route 6 zoning study amendments of $35,000. Um, Jim, do you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, we, we reviewed these internally, um, we met with the Fire Department, Planning Board, members of the Planning Board, as well as representatives of the School Department. The review group, uh, recommended that these funds be allocated for these purposes, mostly from the local funds, but we will try to, we will apply to the Bristol County funds to see if we can utilize those funds, they're a little bit more stringent on their regulations and their requirements, but, uh, we will apply to them as well, we'll see if, uh, they do qualify for those funds. But there is funding in the local AP funds as well as Bristol County, and we recommend approval.
I'll move it.
Second, so this still has to be approved or you already ran by?
It did.
The expenditures through?
I, I will submit them to Bristol County, um, and if it's not approved there, then local AP funds will be used.
All right.
And, and Dick and I did participate in the conversations, uh, about these to get some more detail about all of them. Is there any comments or questions?
Chair, questions or comments? All right, uh, it wasn't clear on this from our, on our meeting of the subcommittee, but Jim, is it the intent, if I may, ask a question, he's the chair, uh, and all of these will be submitted to the county first or, or just some of them?
Well, definitely the two for the Fire Department will be submitted, I, I'll talk to them about the passenger vans, that might be a little bit more difficult to get through, and if, um, if I don't get positive feedback, I probably will not submit that one. The zoning study, if I can link it to the infrastructure improvements, which I think we can along Route 6, they may consider it, uh, but what I've done in the past, that I've gotten some initial feedback from them, uh, before the application is submitted, and, um, if there's a possibility of getting it approved, I will submit the applications.
Are you talking about all of them or just the, uh, Route 6?
Um, so I, I'm looking, I'm hopefully, I'm going to submit the Fire Department ones, uh, the multi-use vans I will ask about, but I do not think those will be approved by the state, by Bristol County. The Route 6 zoning study, I think, has a long shot or a shot at getting approved by them, so I will contact them and see if, um, they would consider it, if it'd be considered, I will file out as an application and see if it gets approved.
Okay, and that's like step one, but if, let's say they're all, or one or more are not approved by the county, then we go to the town funds. The title for that is Non-Entitled Unit, that's what we heard, Non-Entitled Unit, that was the designation, NEU. But anyway, regarding that, now you had a, a total, we had it exhibited, the rest of you haven't seen this, but the subcommittee, Jim is keeping track of all the money, every, every cent, and what had been spoken for and what was still out there. And the problem with the, uh, the NEU is, I think this one is, the use of this money for those purposes under the NEU part is a little bit dicey, because we, we're going on the assumption, and this is what I'm trying to build up to, that that is appropriate, uh, because they may not qualify under the, the initial rule, which is called the initial final rule, which is kind of an oxymoron, but now we have the final rule, and that's where we supposedly have up to $10 million, not that we have 10 billion, but that we could pretty much do what we want with that. But now, I guess we should be comfortable that that's appropriate, I mean, it's, there's no clear guidance on this. So if we spend the money and it's ultimately not approved under some audit process, whatever they're doing, because we, we're not really sure what that is, we're learning as we're going here with all this, and we could be on the hook for expenditures. So is there any way we can get some guidance on this from a source that, I don't know if I'm asking for, the source could be in the Department of Revenue or Finance, um, because I think the, the Fire Department ones, we can link to COVID, the whole initial rule was about some linkage to COVID.
Or destruction.
Yeah, generally speaking, I mean, it, it, there was more to it than that, this was not, uh, simple, it was a complicated definition. But we've had success with, with the, uh, the Fire Department's request, so that, that seems to be logical that there's a connection to COVID. The Route 6 is infrastructure, that's another category, that's, that, that should be automatic in my opinion, not that they're asking for my opinion, but it's the, the school vans, which I personally have, so, I personally support that, but I'm a little bit worried that that would not be approved ultimately, or could be challenged is probably a better way of saying it, and it is a significant amount of money that also takes away from the $1.6 million that we have under the, the town money. So I know that making this complicated, but it is complicated. So I guess, I have a certain degree of hesitation about the, the passenger vans under, under this. However, having said that, if we go to the county first, we can get some guidance on that, maybe they'll tell us it's fine to put it under the town money, but they can't do it at their level, and we would understand that. The good thing about the county money is that if it's approved, that's it, we are not, the town is not liable. If it's challenged, they wouldn't be challenging us, they would challenge the county. And that's one of the desirable features of the county money, among other things, it being twice as large too, is also another desirable feature. But if you get my drift here, this is one that I, I think three of the four here are probably going to be okay in one way, shape or form, it could be defensible. I'm just not sure about the passenger vans at the schools, because I don't think that's connected to COVID, but for other reasons, I support it, and if we do have this $10 billion room in, in the, the rules, to get them, to put them into effect without any approvals, then I do think we should take advantage of it, but I'm just putting this out there as being potentially problematic.
So I just, I want to comment on the vans, so, um, I was opposed to the vans for quite a while, I put off, I put off the discussion about it and the recommendation for quite a while, much to the chagrin of the School Department, um, but I am now in support of these two master brands. So, um, the first, the primary reason is because the School Department has been appropriating funding similar to what we did for ARPA, they had asset money, they chose to spend the, on something other than these vans, right? So, um, my first thought was, use your own money to buy your vans, right? The second thing was, I didn't think it really fell in the, we were really trying to target infrastructure and, and COVID, right? So they, the, the police vehicle, the Fire Department vehicles make a lot of sense because they were using this for like homebound, they were giving like, when they were, um, providing shots and services and stuff to homebound people, like, they actually are using these vehicles, and it's significantly cheaper to send out a four-wheel drive vehicle with the guy on it rather than a big fire engine, right? So the, I, I, I think the county will approve the, the Fire Department ones, I think will be okay, I think the zoning study ones, I think that'll be okay. The passenger vans, I think that we're going to have to fund under our local ARPA money, and it'll have to be in this kind of, this kind of revenue you don't have to, it's kind of like lost revenue rather than strictly infrastructure, so, uh, but the School Department, I believe, has made a very compelling case about how, uh, what a positive impact this will have on their operating budget, because their transportation costs are so high.
Yeah.
Um, and that if they can, if they can use these smaller vans, um, they can have people with different kinds of licensing drive them, you can have other School Department employees drive them, so, um, I think it, I didn't like it at first, I resisted it for quite a while, just put it all out there, but, um, I am supportive of it now, and I, I think it, I think it's probably going to have to come out of our local money, and I actually am okay with that now.
Well, I mean, if you go back 20 years ago, our School Department always had these vans, um, and then when we went to, you know, contract out for transportation, we got rid of our own transportation, um, thinking we would save our own transportation, um, thinking we would save money, which I don't think we have, but that's another discussion for another day, um, we, you know, we had these vans to go pick up, uh, children that have very specific needs that, and transportation needs that go along with those. Um, the insurance, the, the, the vehicles, the, the maintenance that you have to put on a vehicle like that is so exorbitantly high that you have to charge an exorbitant rate to the town to transport those kids every day. If we can do it ourselves, then it saves a significant amount of money. Again, it's a hundred and thirty thousand in short change, and I'm always of the ilk, if you don't ask, the answer's always no. Doesn't hurt to ask the county, hey, you going to pay for these? And if they say yes, great, we're off the hook. If they say no, then we only have to take a hundred and thirty from that million and a half to pay that part, but we're still going to end up with more than likely another two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of capital improvements that we have to pay for. So, I'm going to move it.
Well, second.
Just for the commentary, Brian brings up a good point. If, if everything went sour on the, on the buses, the last process we have is our own capital improvements planning committee that would deal with it, among all the other requests.
Town meeting.
Yeah, and it tend, and, and ultimately would be approved by town meetings. It's not like, you know, we.
Yeah.
We could find or anything, or throw them in jail. We, we would just have to go back and look at it as we look at all capital expenses. And I would think there'd be, uh, certainly for one of the vans, there'd be plenty of sympathy for doing that.
Yeah.
So there's, it's sort of like a safety valve here of a sort.
I don't know, I, I didn't really look into that deep, but other communities use it for training, so they can fit more people in the van to go for training now and not.
I, I'm actually, when, when the superintendent was talking about it, I mean, you probably know more about this from, from your district, but there's like kids who live in other places who are like, have split homes, and you still have to, you have to pry, you have to go to some distance to go get that child to transport them to school. So it isn't even just like for the extracurriculars or anything, they're like, they have people that they're servicing, they're small.
Yeah, it depends if you put it in a, it's a bus or not, but like I, like I just mentioned, training, COVID, and even the police department borrowed them if they have, well, they're like six persons in it, because it's a full-size van, but it's, it's all around use. The golf team, you just throw their bags in. I don't know how deep they're going to go, but like I said, other departments use it to, to go for training, and it's a powerful.
And either way, it saves the town a lot of money to have access to those vehicles.
Absolutely does, I just don't know how, I didn't research how deep they're going to go.
It's, it's a good investment, no matter which.
Well, I think I, my, my impression from, is that they would probably be using them exclusively, because I think they started out asking for more than two.
Like I tell you, another community, another community was letting the, the police department borrow another emergency department, and they ended up trading cars, because the police department needed it so much, they ended up trading for a small unit.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second to.
Steve had already moved that. Brian already seconded it, he just did it again.
Oh, alright, whatever, whatever the initial was.
Whoever wants to give credit for it.
The initial one, because we didn't pull it off the floor, so.
Okay, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's Janice. Um, we have a request from Matt Armando, who's here, uh, the Board of Health Director, to approve review and approve the plan to install restroom at the transfer station. Yeah, Tom, you're writing today, and Matt Armando.
Blue.
Uh, so Jim, can you just give us a little why we're talking about restroom at the transfer station, and then we can have them talk about what they found?
Yes, we have this item, the next item of both, um, came up from inspections done by the state, and they've requested or require the town to take corrective actions to put toilet facilities at both the transfer station and the cemetery, um, as well as, um, a hand washing station with warm water. Um, the transfer station's a little bit more difficult, because they don't have anything right now, they do not have a well in their septic system, uh, they do not have the facility to put a restroom in, um, possibly get an existing shed, but that'd be a tight fit at best. Um, so I know Matt has looked into a number of different options as I have, and, um, I think they're recommending portable restroom as well.
So we have a, we have a three, we have a memo that has like three options on it. Go ahead.
The cemetery department can't use the fire police station, is this my fault?
So we're talking, we're, we're talking about the, go ahead.
I thought we were doing both at the same time.
No, we, we're not, because we're on the transfer station one right now, there are two, there are two different budgets, and so, but you can answer that.
I can. So we did, I asked the inspector when he came down, and they said, no, it's too far away. Um, they are looking for things within, I think, ninety feet of their main working facility.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I thought we were.
We did kind of summarize them together.
You're right. That's what I asked. Um, okay, so Matt, what have you, what have you defined it out?
So, like Jim said, we got three quotes on three different options. We got the, uh, shed option, we got the portable, uh, trailer option, and then we have the, uh, PortaJohn option. Um, so you can see the different prices on the memo, you know, they're quite expensive to do the, the, kind of like a permanent building is seventy-eight thousand dollars. To do a trailer option is fifty-four thousand dollars, and then, then we have the PortaJohn. I think the PortaJohn option makes sense, uh, at the moment, until we figure out what the permanent solution's going to be. Um, the PortaJohn option's going to cost us around, uh, seventy-two hundred dollars a year, um, and the rest of this fiscal year would be sixty-five hundred dollars. The hot water sink Jim was referring to would be a purchase, it's like a fifteen-hundred-dollar purchase, it's just a portable sink, you plug it in, it produces hot water, has a gray water tank, and the company that services the PortaJohn will also service the gray water in that hot water sink. So I think that's the best option, um, until we figure out a more permanent solution, and, you know, maybe for the next couple of years, that's, you know, something to go with until we, we figure it out. I mean.
Yep. Well, just the funding portion of it, we're asking for ARPA funds, this is rep, well within the realm of a public health, um, need, um.
So the notice has previously approved Board of Health allocations, so you can.
Right. So, uh, last year, we requested a hundred and five thousand dollars, and we had to then get authorization for each, um, trench of money we were proposing to spend. We got approval to, uh, for funding for, uh, an additional public health nurse and a trailer, which, uh, the public health nurse legged and come, and we didn't fill the position. The trailer, we have, is years-long waits to get them, so we're proposing to reallocate, uh, money that you've already authorized us to spend to cover this. So it would be ARPA funds, but, um, it's not asking for new, newly authorized money, it's redirecting money that you've already approved for the Board of Health.
And then Jim, you're recommending this, right?
Yes, I'm recommending the portable trails, and these have to be heated, that's why they're a little bit different from the existing PortaJohn. Um, they do have some ARPA funds that have been approved previously and also approved by the Board of Selectmen. I'd suggest that we fund it with ARPA funds for the remainder of this year and see if we can include it in the budget for next year. I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but, um, at some point, we're going to have to include it in the overall budget for the power.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to have ARPA facilities. I mean, it's just, you know, they've operated for decades with no facilities, and that's, you know.
We did ask for capital funding last year to cover a large enough trailer with a bathroom.
I know.
Didn't get it, but, um.
I tried.
Everybody tried.
I'm only one, Kai, I'm the committee.
Alright, so do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a, a thought here. So three, which we're employing, is, uh, just a motion, is the least expensive, it's temporary by its very nature. Uh, is there an argument here to bring forth to the Capital Improvement Committee, which will be meeting shortly, I suppose, these other proposals? Because one of these is going to have to be employed at some point in time. I think the, there'd be a lot of interest in this on the part of the committee, uh, so we might want to put it up now and see if that would pass. If it does, that would be a town meeting item, but then we would have longer-term funding issues.
I plan on bringing, uh, one, one, if not both of these, um, in my request, but I'm also working on another option that I just need to gather some more information on. Um, in, yes, when I submit my capital improvement request to Jim, one, if not all, these options will, will be presented, um, and for the committee to look at.
Okay, good.
And we're, we're meeting soon, right? For our first meeting?
Yeah, I don't know what Jim is, after a schedule.
There's an email saying that.
I sent out the request, I think the, um, department request has to be in the end of October, so we'll be meeting in November, I think, early November.
I thought I had gotten an email, but I forgot.
Alright, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's Janice. Do you have anything else? I think you didn't have anything else. Anything else you want to mention while you're here?
Yeah.
You're getting to the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, right?
Oh, okay.
Cemetery is a department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to your own.
Now we're on cemetery. So I request the cemetery department to use up to sixty-five hundred dollars of perpetual care funds to provide portable restrooms at the cemetery. So very similar situation there.
Yep. Uh, I'm going to just move it without further discussion from myself.
Second.
All the same things apply.
But the, the recommendation here is basically a similar thing, right? They heated it.
It's similar, just a quick explanation, this does have a well there, so it makes it a little easier. They do have a building where we can put a restroom in.
Yeah.
I discussed it with Diamond, we're supposed to meet with them later this week or beginning of next week. They're going to take a look at it to see if there's any interest in them assisting with some of the work.
Awesome. Awesome.
So this will get us through to the end of June, and we'll make a decision going forward for next year.
Yeah, they're, the situation's a little easier, because they do have a well on, on facility, and they have, you know, they have had one. Um, you know, the transfer station obviously is going to be, uh, a little more costly and complex, but this, this, is this something, uh, that could possibly, like, if, if this is infrastructure, if it can, it's part of our infrastructure, I mean, is this anything that could possibly could be submitted for, to put the septic in and the bathroom in that could be submitted, uh, for ARPA funds or?
I did pose that question to Bristol County, um, they weren't too high on it, but they said, you know, you could submit it one of two ways, either as a public health issue or a, um, an infrastructure project, but it's worth a shot, I think, if we get to that point.
Again, you know, when the, when the tap is open, you know, you've got to fill the bucket, you know? Um, and if it's open right now, you know, we don't know when it'll, uh, close. So again, and the other thing, I think I was to just bring back the cemetery, um, is it possible to use perpetual care funds for purchase of new cemetery lands?
Good question, I don't know if I can, I can check.
Call Benny Sleet on that one.
Well, again, yeah, that's, I'm just looking at, you know, things we're going to meet up there.
So now we have the request, uh, this is a portable restroom at the cemetery department. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's Janice. We have, um, Jay, a request from Chris Gonval, um, to sign the contract with Rochester Batuminus for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three town roadway paving improvements. Jim?
Yeah, so this is a standard contract that they do yearly, uh, they could go off a bid. Rochester Batuminus Concrete was the low bidder for this project, uh, the, it's, the contract is for one million dollars, one million fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. That's five hundred and sixty thousand will come from chapter ninety funding, five, four hundred and sixty thousand from the winter recovery assistance program, and there was fifty thousand in a, in a Warren article for the point turnaround paving as well. I recommend approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a request from Chris Leonard, Marine Services, to use four hundred and nine, four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars from the towns grant matching funds account to match the Seaport Economic Council's grant for new shore power pedestals at the town dock.
This is not a point, correct?
The town dock down is not a point.
Yes.
Just for.
And we have these funds in the account.
That's right. I didn't want people to think that this was the Higgs Bridge, you know, over there, but I'm putting power pedestals there. Why they better be confused.
No, so, um, I'm sorry, the, uh, he was awarded a grant, they applied for and awarded a grant from the Seaport Economic Development Council to replace the electrical pedestals on the town dock at the south end of Main Road. Um, there is a matching requirement, and he's requesting four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars from the towns grant matching funds account, which was set up a couple of years ago. Um, and this will allow him to tap into the Seaport Economic Council's funds. I recommend approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I forgot to ask for discussion. Okay, we have a request from Maury May, who I do not see.
Maury's left with the.
Advice to the Economic Development Task Force to hold winter markets at the Annex Gym on November twelve and nineteen and December ten and seventeen, to, so the request to hold the winter markets, to authorize a banner over May Road, and to request the Recreation Commission waive its a hundred and fifty-dollar fee for use of the Annex Gym or lower. Uh, do you know about this request?
Yeah, um, it's similar to what happened last time, is that there was a high fee and it got reduced. That's what it boils down to. I don't think there'll be an issue with fifty dollars a day, it's just that it's town, town use, the town committee that, to save the town money, does not have any other point for it, so we do not have an economic coordinator anymore, again, to save money and, and just keep us going. It's a volunteer committee. Town function is to have the, uh, the extra farmers' markets, have a little something that townspeople can go.
So Dana, I'm assuming you're here because you want to talk about it, but you don't have to talk about it, but if you'd like to. This is our.
There's also an email from Tim Gillespie that I just pulled.
I'm sorry, from who?
From Tim Gillespie.
Tim Gillespie.
Oh, it's for you.
Oh, it didn't get passed around.
Brian's just too busy.
Backed up, this is the.
He backed me up with ten, ten stacks of paper.
The recreation department.
My fingers are so dry.
Yeah, the best thing was to be, thank you.
Okay.
Is there a level?
Okay. Do you want us to talk about this with this?
Either, it was your choice.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I first want to say we are in full support of the Westport Farmers Market. The Recreation Department loves what they do and thinks it's a real benefit to the community. Uh, however, the board needs to know that, um, the fee that is charged, which was grandfathered in, um, from before I was here, and I believe was charged even before we had official Recreation Department, was given, um, and the fifty dollars a day was grandfathered in for when they used the side parking lot, because they opened the gym to, so that themselves, the vendors, as well as, I guess, the general public, I'm not sure, can go in to use the indoor bathrooms from the gym, as well as have access to electricity in the gym. So that's why it's only fifty a day for that, because they're not actually using the full gym. Um, the winter market is different in that they are using the whole gym inside, um, so that fee is the same as anyone else in the community if they want to use the full gym, which is twenty-five dollars an hour for a resident with a two-hour minimum, and for a non-resident, it's thirty-five an hour. But, um, we have been grandfathering in the twenty-five an hour for residents, since it's, um, overseen by the Westport Economic Development. So that being said, if the fee is waived or even reduced, especially for the winter market, it is going to hurt the Recreation Department. Those fees, um, there's two ways that the Recreation Department survives, um, through our Recreation revolving account. That's through charging fees for our programs, and we always try to charge the most lowest fees we can, um, so that it's a benefit to the community, and they don't feel like they're being overcharged. Um, and then also through the gym rentals. Um, gym rentals, now that the pandemic has kind of subsided, and of course, it's been a real challenge for our department through the pandemic times, um, gym rentals are increasing. I'm getting a lot of requests for indoor birthday events, because there's not a lot of places around here where people can have a facility that's a, you know, reasonable cost for a birthday party. But we also have the new Bedford Coin Show. We have the Dartmouth Dog, um, nonprofit that's used it. We have the basketball groups as well as, um, the soccer groups that have used it. So if the fee is waived, um, I had sent Jim this kind of breakdown for the past fees we've received for the use from the farmers' market. Do you all have this, this one?
No. I don't know if they do.
Okay, I actually made copies that I can pass out. So this is just since I've been in the position, the fees that have been charged. And as you can see or note, um, it started in 2019 until today, but because of the pandemic, they're, you know, the services weren't happening.
We got one more?
Oh, one more, sorry.
Brian gave out this.
Thank you. So the winters market for this season, they're asking for four dates, um, two in November and two in December. So at the typical $25 an hour, they want the gym from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which usually the time includes the setup and the breakdown, because they're using the gym. Is 600. So as it said in the agenda, 150 a day for that timeframe. They could reduce the timeframe if they wanted, um, to lower the cost. But, um, I still have yet to receive a filled-out contract from the group to secure the dates. As well as, we have also grandfathered in, um, not requiring a deposit for this group. So with every other group in the community, we usually require a $100 deposit. As kind of a security so that if something were to happen with the gym, you know, whether it would be the floor or whatnot. So with this group, we waived that, so they don't have to pay that. And that's, again, what's happening before I came in, so I kept that going.
Can you just clarify, what other town entities give you $100 to use the gym?
So, so the, the town staff department, such as the Board of Health that does it for the blood drive, the, um, trying to think of those, oh, town clerk for voting, of course, they don't pay. They, they use it for town purposes. So, but like, if it's a nonprofit group, a for-profit group, a community member, anyone in the community who wants to use it, they're charged the fee. Now, that fee goes to benefit the Recreation Department and keeps us afloat. So as you can see there, the total since 2019 was 3,350. And, I mean, right, that fee right there can help pay for wood chips at a playground, which are very much needed right now and I'm trying to do. So, um, every little bit counts and matters and helps keep us going because, um, we don't have a general account other than my salary. So the recreation revolving account is what we need to keep our department going and help positively affect the community.
I'm trying to figure out, uh, with, that's in front of me here, a little bit confused.
Sure.
Is if the Economic Development Task Force hadn't made this request to accommodate them for the dates they want, what would they pay? Or give the total amount that they pay?
Their asking has to waive.
I know that. That's not the question.
So if they, for this winter, want it for the four dates that they requested, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which is six hours a day, at $25 an hour, that's 150 for the day. So total for the four dates used is 600 for the winter season.
And they're asking, contrasting that with what they're asking for is $50 a day, that's $200.
So $50 a day is used if they're not using the indoor part of the gym. So they are in the parking lot just using the bathrooms and electricity. So technically, I can still use the gym for recreation programs. Or if someone is willing to still rent the inside of the gym while the farmers' market is going on, that's possible too. However, what's happened is a lot of people who want to rent it for birthday parties on a Saturday don't want strangers from the farmers' market coming in to use the bathrooms during their party. So that has kind of been unsuccessful.
Does that many people use it for birthday parties that get the insurance and everything? I wouldn't think it would be worth it. But there's that many people renting it and the insurance waived?
According to the contract, um, so, so they don't get the insurance.
We always require that on onsite groups. We don't require it anywhere.
I don't know. I've just been doing what Lucy passed on to me.
All right. When I was on recreation, they had that, they had that paid. Okay.
And then, and then in addition, um, attached to the numbers there, through what Lucy had passed on to me when I first started, I found a, from the Economic Development Task Force, a summer farmers' market, um, kind of rules. And you can see circled there toward the bottom of the first page. I don't know if they still do this, but they charge the vendors fees to have a booth. So it says here, and again, this document's from 2018, so I don't know if their fees have increased or if it's changed at all. But it says that they can have up to 20 vendors and that they're charging $10 a day for those vendors who commit to all 16 Saturdays. $12.50 a day for those who plan to attend bi-weekly. And for individual days, they charge 15 a day. So if they have five, six vendors, that fully covers the cost of, of what we're asking for the facility fee. And if you look at any other facility in the area, they all charge. The school, sitting empty there, would charge our department 35 a day if we want to use their gym. The Grange...
The schools are charging you now? Because you weren't paying anything before. Now you are?
Beverly Bish and I, well, Beverly Bish and I have communicated. And she told me that they said they would charge 35 a day for her to use the gym, because they have to pay a janitor to open it and close it and be there. So I haven't even approached it because we, that would blow my budget for my programs and people wouldn't sign up. So that's precluding us from using that facility space. I know the Grange, which has a great upper space as well as outdoor space, um, I believe they charge 25 an hour as well. And sorry, it was, did I say 35 a day? I think it's 35 an hour. So, I mean, what we're charging for the annex is on the lower end and very comparable with any other place that's asking for indoor facility use. And I also feel like if we let this group that, you know, again, I fully support the farmers' market, you know, but it's a for-profit venture, right? They're selling their goods for a profit. And if we open it up to saying we're gonna waive it for them, what's to prevent any other group saying waive it for us too?
So I think, I mean, I think, like, in a nutshell, you're talking about lost revenue here. If you have the, if you, if you have four days where the winter market is there, you cannot get your $150 a day.
And we can't rent it to anyone else.
Right, you can't rent it to anyone else, and so it's potential lost revenue. So I guess there's some question about, are you really renting it every Saturday and Sunday? Is it literally lost revenue?
Oh, it'd just be what the Saturdays actually would be.
Well, Saturday's the most popular for birthday parties especially. And to have it from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, that means the people can only use it in the evenings or later afternoons.
They start at four.
Yeah.
So you get two hours a day, like.
Now...
Yeah.
Now, it's my job to rent out the gym as much as I can or, and/or use it for recreation programs as much as I can, because that brings in revenue. So, um, I'm just here to defend our revenue stream and help keep our department going.
Chair, commentary. Unfortunately, Maury's not here, but you are, Steve, so what, what is the, you know, when you're gonna rent a place, you pay the going rate. If you're gonna rent a room at the Hampton Inn or the Suites, you ask them what it is, and they say, yes, what it is, either why not, you don't. So why, why is the Economic Development Task Force requesting a reduction in the normal fee?
Well, because it's a town entity. We do it a town function.
Yeah, but not all the vendors are from town.
And we're still giving the town rate.
Here's my thing, is you're, you're, you're having farms that are making money. And trust me, I've been to a lot of farmers' markets. They make a lot of money. I talked to a lot of farmers. They make the most money they make all year, this time of year at farmers' markets. They make most of their profit at this time of the year. And so you're talking about spreading $400 over four days for four, that's $100 for 20 vendors. That's $5 apiece.
If we get 20.
To, to, I'm just saying.
How about the Economic Development Fund, that has no salary pay, that we stay afloat? And so we don't have to go to town meeting act for money. That's the whole point, is to get a little bit in our funds.
I know, but you haven't expended that fund in forever, as far as I...
Because we don't, right, we don't have any salary people. We all do it volunteer. We got rid of the salary person, saving the town money.
I, I get that, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's, this is $400 that you can spread across 10 to 20 vendors. Over, over four days, that they're gonna make, they're gonna make profit. Because it's almost captive audience. People are gonna be coming to leave. They're gonna, people love, they know this is gonna happen, they're coming. They're gonna make the money. I, I agree, I tend to agree with Tim Gillespie and with Dana here that, I mean, okay, so we have town baseball leagues, so we're gonna give them a discount. We have town grasshoppers.
That's a whole separate entity, baseball.
But it's, I, I realize that the Economic Task Force is sponsoring it, but it's, but it's not running it. It's not making a profit from it. The people who are making profit from it should pay a normal rate for farmers. Go to, I mean, go to any popular farmers' market that are on other properties and they're gonna be paying a lot more than, you know, $25, $30, or $10 a day to have a stand.
The whole point is, and that's why it was reduced last time, town building funded by taxpayers, uh, hosting a town committee. That was the whole point of it last time. That's why it went from 100 to 25 or whatever it was. And the point was to try again, to try to keep it going. We, we didn't have it last year, but that was COVID connected. Knocked it down from like six to like four, just the current weekends. And that's what they're trying to do. I think he said there was only 10 vendors that would make it, 10 tops. That's what it was last time. It was, it was spread out. It was only like 10.
Again, that's $60 apiece for four days of making money.
Well, they don't charge 60. It's 10 to 20. I wish Maury was here for that part, because he handles it most.
But we're talking $400 difference here?
Because, so I think, I think, I think the Recreation Department would like us to authorize the fee of $150 a day for four days.
Well, $25 an hour, depending on how many hours they book it for.
$25 a day, $25 a day.
An hour.
An hour. $25 an hour, of course, they said six hours in their plan, but $25 an hour for the market.
And I do...
The market, the Economic Development Task Force is asking us to significantly reduce that.
Yeah, he said 50, but you gotta move it a little bit, you know, whatever. Yeah, we wanted to keep things rolling.
I'm inclined to say if, if the, I'm inclined to say that the Recreation Department has the opportunity to sell that space for $25 an hour, I think it's not, doesn't feel right to me to not have them do that. I like the winter market. I'm gonna go there. I, like, I don't want to say no to the winter market. And I know it's difficult because the market, when you first starting out markets like this, you don't get a lot of volume. You don't get a lot of vendors yet because you gotta grow it. And so I appreciate that, you know, if it's a six-hour thing, $150 might be a lot. So I'm appreciative of that, but also I think, you know, I think the Recreation Department is, they, they have control of that facility. I think they should be able to decide to...
They still do, right? Because Recreation always had to have it signed off by us, but are they totally controlled now? Just, just so we know for the future?
That's the way they've been operating for the last couple of years.
I do have a copy of the gym rental contract and it states the fees clearly in here, if anyone wants it as a reference.
The board of directors still has control.
We understand what the general public pays, Dana. We're talking about a town entity, just like you don't pay the schools when you have your courses at the schools. That's what I'm talking about. Town usually helps the town.
So the school's saying that the schools do charge.
Schools are gonna charge us if we want to.
They haven't been for years. So you're, you're gonna tell me that now that you're gonna pay for the classrooms? I mean, well, what I think was fair is fair.
Well, let's not attack her. She's got it too.
We need to, I, I just want to say, if people are paying zero, tell them that we can't pay 50. That's, that's my issue, that's all.
Well, no one's paying zero. Somebody has to pay for custodial services.
Same thing with the schools.
Well, we are the ones that authorize the schools to be able to do that, so that's on us, because...
No, I'm talking about the new school all the way.
Well, the old school, we authorize the school to do it.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
I was just gonna say, can't we come down to the middle somewhere? Don't necessarily 50, I'm not 150, but $100 for the first year if we kind of get off the ground. I mean, you said a ton of people are making money, but when it comes right down to it, the US, you're only charging.
Oh, so hope the farmers all...
So the farmers may be making a bowl of money, but that's not going to stick.
Well, I would like to know, are they charging the vendors for you, for the booths, as this document says? Right, but even if they got five vendors, that would cover the $50 fee in the spring/summer season per day. Because right here, it's saying $10 a day for the vendors. No, it's, it's 50 a day.
Shame on Maury for not showing up and leaving me to the wolves if you will.
I just need to motion somebody about something. Like Anne or Brian, or somebody like, like move some, we need to...
I would move that we don't reduce the fees. And, and I'm gonna give you, my reason is that Dana has done more for this Recreation Department than I've seen anyone do since I lived in this town. I have, you know, you would have to go back to the early, the late 70s.
When we had swimming and tennis.
When we actually had, when we actually had real recreation in this town, and I was 13, okay? That was 42 years ago, almost 43 years ago, okay? It's the last time I can remember that we had actual activities for kids in this town. It's where we were horribly lacking. What Dana has done with this department is amazing, and the way she's done it is exactly as she has described to you. And I get it that we're trying to promote farming and everything, but we are. Charging only $10 a day to a booth at a, at a farmers' market is incredibly low. Most people are gonna pay 50 to $100 anywhere else they go to participate in a farmers' market, okay? And they, I mean, they make the money. They, they're gonna make the money. People are all about farm-to-table. They're all about locally grown. They're all about it. I just, you know, if, if Maury has to raise the rates that you guys, you know, charging, maybe he should think about that. And I know we're trying to promote things, but we can't completely subsidize it. You know, it's a capital, it's a capital expenditure. It's a, it's a, it's a capital... I'm gonna move that we don't change the fees.
So that we move that we authorize the banner, we, um, and we keep the, the fee at the state of our calendar.
Exactly.
I will say. So is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. What, the thing we didn't ask is, is the Recreation Department okay with them renting it in the first place?
Yes.
Even though it leases out some other people to use it.
We're in full, we're in full support of what the Westport Farmers Market does. They've been doing it since I started this job and I always congratulate them on the good work they do. And like I said, we grandfathered in the 50 a day when they're using the outside area so that they can have access to the indoor bathrooms, electricities. And then, but when they're using the full gym, when we can't rent it out to anyone else, it's technically they're renting it. We just ask them to pay the same fee that anyone else would, the $25 an hour to our minimum for a resident. And we will continue to waive the $100 deposit. And they're the only group we do that with.
Yeah, so that, that sounds generous, but I think the motion didn't include the dates. I think it was just, just the banner and the fee.
Authorize the date.
Yeah, that's not our business.
Yeah, I'll include the dates.
Really? You're just approving the banner?
We're just approving the banner. We're approving the banner and we are not reducing the waiver. We're not waiving the rate. That, that's effectively what we're doing, right? We're approving the banner and we are keeping the rate, the $25 per hour rate.
So we have no opinion on the dates. It's not our decision. It's Recreation Department.
The dates are available. I have been in communication with, um, the, I believe it's Hannah and then Wolback. And they, I've repro, I've tentatively put them in our calendar with the dates, even though we don't have a filled-out contract yet. So we're holding those dates.
That's the Recreation Department's purview. So you don't have to vote on that.
No.
Good. That's it in the story.
Moving on, the banner and the rates.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Do you have one? Thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I know, Brian didn't mention it, but one thing I know, that the, the market is going to benefit from the communications that you got, because I don't know of any other town department that has a kind of social media following that you do. And I'm sure you will be generously promoting these markets on your social...
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Everybody like and share.
Yes.
Anything else going on in Recreation while you're here?
I just want to, I guess, state that I'm working hard to improve our town playgrounds. Just today, you mentioned social media. There was something on social media from a community member saying there's no wood chips at bicentennial playground. I've actually been trying, I've been working with Benton Court to pay for the Recreation Department to use their recreation revolving funds to pay for wood chips for that playground. But unfortunately, because the highway department's been short-staffed and not available to help spread them, I've been trying to find volunteer groups to help spread them. And I'm in contact with Keith Nicholson through the fire department and having the fire explorers help spread them. They did that for the annex playground, um, and it's just been nailing down a date with them that they can do it. We're hoping to have it done in November, they said. So, um, you know, I know it's hard to go to a playground as a community member and see it in disarray, but that's one thing we can control right now, is trying to put in good wood chips, and it's been lacking for a while, so... So, um, myself and the Rec Commission have been working on that, as well as, um, trying to have a long-term plan for our playgrounds in town.
Boy Scouts will help you too.
Yes, yes.
Now with our Recreation, we did it ourselves. I stood in the calluses. But yes, the Boy Scouts will help you too.
Yes, and I would be out there as well helping.
Very good. Actually, Jim Long's daughter did a lot. Uh, excuse me. Jim Long did the facility. Jim Coin's daughter did a lot with the woodchips and stuff.
Yes, so thank you very much.
There's four of them.
Yeah, I know.
How many people are in this committee?
Okay, now we're back, because we're playing like, agenda like today. So we are four C, which is the budget discussion. Uh, fun time. Jim, what's going on with the budget process?
So just to follow up on what Dana was saying about, um, some of the deficiencies at the parks, we're seeing this with a lot of things through town, right? We just don't have the staff or the resources to provide the services that we'd like to, like to provide. You know, we get calls sometimes, you know, catch basin's full, it needs cleaning, you know, goes to the Highway Department, they put it on the list, but it's not something that can get done in a week. It might take a month or two. Same thing with the Highway Department going over to the park to do work, or coming over to the town hall to do work. We just don't have the staff or the resources. And it's tough telling people when they have a simple request that we can't, we can't do it, or we can't do it in a reasonable amount of time. Until we get more funding, I, I don't see a, an alternative. So anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I know that there is at least one thing on social media about pothole, right? But we have so many road miles in town, like, it's not like, no one should assume that anyone's ignoring a giant pothole, right? We probably need to come up.
You just gotta call it in.
We call it in.
Call it in. You know, we, we're addressing everything we can and what we have, you know, and then some, but it's, it's difficult with the limited resources and staff that we have right now.
Jim, you might be able to get, Jim Long, Jim Long helped put it in. He needed the fundraiser to get it. Maybe he'll sponsor it if somebody contacts him. He's got a lot of businesses going on. Couple of loads of woodchips and stuff. I don't know that as a fact, somebody would have to contact him. But when we do get on Recreation, that's how we got it, was the fundraising.
Okay, on the budget policies.
So worksheets need to be distributed to the departments within the next week or two. I did submit a draft municipal budget calendar. I will get that back out to the board members this week. Things are moving, you know, it comes up quick and it moves pretty quick. Um, but, but we should have, uh, the departments submit their, their recommended budgets within the next three or four weeks, uh, three weeks, I believe. Um, I've asked them for a budget with, including the contracted raises, which are roughly two percent for most, if not all departments. Um, and right now I have level, level services for their expense accounts. Not level funded. We may have to cut that back to level funded as we move forward, but at this point, we'll see what the level services needs and we'll go from there. Just looking at the revenues, the budget revenues from the local receipts, and I gave you a copy of that, for FY twenty-three, are projected to be about eighty-five percent of fiscal year twenty-two. So in twenty-two, the revenues actually came in higher than anticipated. Uh, we've been budgeting over the years at like ninety-five percent of actual revenues, which is relatively high. We should probably be down on seventy-five, maybe eighty percent, but based on this past year and the revenues that came in in twenty-two, we're at about eighty-five percent. So that's, that's a good sign. It's, it's not gonna do anything dramatic to the town because these are local receipts that we're looking at these revenues for. Uh, the main driver is excise tax. That brings in anywhere from two-point-seven to three million dollars a year, or just over three million dollars a year. And, um, we had anticipated a slowdown with the lack of cars that were available over the last year or two, but it actually went up, so, you know, that's a good thing. So that's one of the, the positive things, but it's not gonna change anything dramatically, but it, it doesn't put us in the hole at all, so that's, that's good. Um, the property tax levy for the upcoming year will increase close to four percent or just over a million dollars, one-point-one-eight-six million dollars. Uh, that's the standard two-and-a-half percent increase per year. Uh, but also, we're looking, it also includes new growth. So with our receipts coming in a little bit higher, we can budget a little, a little higher for this next coming year, fiscal year twenty-four. Um, I'm hoping to get an additional three-hundred thousand, maybe as high as four-hundred thousand more on local receipts. Uh, we also have Brookwood Solar that came online this year in July. Uh, they are paying a pilot, and that's about a hundred thousand. That was included in this year's budget, so we will not see that as an increase. Uh, but Coastal Healing at some point should come online, and that'll bring in at least a small amount of revenue. Expenditures, just to overcome last year's, well, this current year's budget, we did appropriate three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars from excise cash from last year to balance the budget. Three-hundred thousand went to the school department and eighty-nine thousand went to the town budget. Uh, so that's something we'll have to make up this year. We have not settled with the police union as yet, as of yet. Um, and their contract dates back to July first of two thousand and twenty-one, so regardless of what that, currently we're in arbitration, binding arbitration right now. Um, so we, regardless of what comes back, we are going to, oh, retro-pay it for a full year and probably a year and a half. That last year was not included in this year's budget, so that is something we'll have to come up with this current year. Um, cherry sheet assessments for charter schools and school choice continue to go up. They went up a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars between FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. And we're also finding that the cherry sheet estimates, the actual charge to the charter schools and school choice are higher than the estimates are ideally. I'm trying to figure out why that is. We've got some inquiries up with the state right now, so, um, that was like a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar difference in the negative. So that, that was a surprise. We just didn't anticipate that. Health insurance premiums, they continue to go up along with property liability insurance. We took a hit last year with the property insurance for the added new school.
It's that also, just whatever factor you usually use, I would increase that by, because the property insurance and liability insurance rates have like increased more, higher than we've ever seen. Higher than we've ever seen.
I gotta pay for Florida.
So just as you, as you're factoring that in, I would be very conservative on that.
Most of those.
It's good to know.
I mean, homeowners are going, homeowners are doubling, from like two to four.
Jim, if I could, with pilot, nothing increased with all the millions they spent at Lawson, right?
It did, it did. So, um, Senator Rodrick's was able to, I think through the budget process, he, he increased the amount of funds that were distributed to pilot, uh, state properties. So we actually made out well in that category. I think we increased two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars over what was in the original governor's budget. So, so that did help us this year.
I thought we got less than that. That's good. Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, health insurance premiums, uh, they've been going up. They, they actually haven't gone up that much over the last couple of years. It's been like four, five percent. Uh, we, we, you look back seven, eight, ten years ago, we had years where it was fifteen, twenty percent, so, um.
Can't get any to use.
That has been fairly good. Um, one of the things.
I paid for anything anyway, so.
We will get a, um, presentation before the board in the next month or two. We did have the insurance company, um, work with us and look at the GIC, which is the state-funded insurance, health insurance program. Does not appear that there's a benefit, at least at this time, for the town to participate in that. Our rates are very close to what the GIC offers. Um, and the big thing is because where we're located, we're located on the south coast, close to Rhode Island. So some of the plans would not allow, um, Westport users to visit, um, healthcare services in Rhode Island unless you went with the, the next plan out. So they anticipate that if we went with the GIC, that we would lose a group out of the less expensive plan that would need the more expensive plan, just so they could keep their same provider. So overall, they did not seem to be a cost savings, but, um, he's just finishing up the numbers and we'll get a little presentation to the board in the next number two. Beyond that, we have the, and these are pretty standard policy recommendations that boards have seen probably over the last six or seven years. We're looking at salary increase of two percent for most departments, so that's what the budgets will come in at, um, for salaries. And the revenues, the new revenues or net revenue that we get, um, this year over last year, recommend be split similar to what we've done over the last, I think, ten years. Fifty-four percent with the school, forty-six percent with the town. Um, and out of that revenue, we take, uh, changes in benefit costs, regional schools, liability insurance, and debt service. Yeah. That's, that's where we are. Not a lot of, it's gonna be a tough year.
Questions? Tough year, you mean twenty-four or twenty-three?
Twenty-three, twenty-three was not an easy year either, but I, you know, we'll get through twenty-three. I, I think the only outstanding issue with twenty-three is the police arbitration. And the retro for that, uh, we may need to go into free cash or some other funding source to, um, pay that when that is settled. But the remainder of twenty-three, I think we look, we look pretty good. Um, twenty-four, you know, our revenues are gonna be similar to what they were last year, our net revenue. Our new revenue is gonna be similar to what it was last year. And, um, you know, there were some positions that were funded through, uh, ESF funding, and, um, you know, we used some free cash last year, so we have to overcome that. So it'll be, it'll be a difficult year. We should know in a month, on a month as to where our local departments, our town departments stand. And, um, I, I know the school department, just based on some of their increases, um, and they, they had two percent increases too, so there was nothing exorbitant over there as far as salaries go, but, um, some ESF funds were used and we used some free cash, so we're gonna have to overcome that in next year's budget as well.
On that point, the ESF funds, the schools used that to assist with their salaries, not us?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess that's appropriate. I have no reason to think it isn't, but it's one percent, right?
They did. I think it was about a hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars to offset some of the salaries. And they had a couple of other positions that I think were funded either part-time or partially through the ESF funds. Um, but we'll have to compensate for those funds in the next budget.
So just following my stream of consciousness here, um, for this year, twenty-three, we were talking about some real dire straits enough too long ago. It looks like, other than the policing, it's, we're getting by, that would be a way of characterizing. The ship's not gonna sink. We're... And I also saw the report you sent regarding, one of the things I'm gonna bring up at the, another item later on. Uh, the state, you had gotten some exhibits showing graphs in various categories that were good, bad, or different. And most of them were pretty good, if I recall. State aid being one that was bad, as, as we well know, or net state aid. Um, so, so that's not much for twenty-three. My question then reverts to twenty-four, which is now on the rise as you're talking about. The two percent increase, uh, with inflation being what it is, we all know, and this also might affect police negotiations, because inflation has gotten worse even in that short period of time. How, how long can we hold on to this two percent, in your opinion?
So fortunately, we're locked into most contracts for another two years, another year and a half. You know, after that, it's gonna be difficult. Um, the police union is one, the Aspen Union, the school department is not settled, and now we have, uh, the local teams, which is the town hall employees, which switched over, so that will be renegotiated as of July first as well. Yeah, but, but we're seeing it everywhere, you know, just like anybody else. It's difficult to fill positions for the money we're paying. And the two percent is not very attractive to people as inflation goes up and.
It's absolutely critical that the diamond vote on November, the word gets out about that, because that will, that would be another four-hundred grand to an operating budget if that doesn't pass.
Well, yeah, I, I think this is, just my own opinion, is there's a great deal of sympathy, as we saw at the town meeting, for Diamond, so I'm optimistic about that. I'm not predicting anything on something like that that's beyond my control, but I'm somewhat optimistic about that. But yeah, if, if it were to fail, it would be, that would be dire straits.
And just to, just to comment back on this year's fiscal twenty-three budget, say, maybe not die. I think we're gonna get, we're gonna get through the year. Our revenue are coming in a little higher than estimated, uh, local receipts anyway, so that's a good thing. Um, you know, the Senate got another two-hundred thousand plus in pilot money from the state for state aid. But in order to even get to the balanced budget that we had this year, we made some drastic cuts in almost every town department, including the school department. So we're already operating at, at a deficit as far as resources and providing services.
Right. We're gonna continue to operate on a deficit like this until further notice unless we adjust our rate. I mean, we really, you know, we keep coming back to the same thing every year. Oh, we gotta make some more cuts. We're gonna make some more cuts. Eventually, there's nothing left to cut. I mean, eventually, you know, we're the twenty-second lowest tax rate in the state of Massachusetts out of three-hundred-and-thirty-one.
Fifty-one.
Three, three-hundred-and-thirty-one.
Very low.
Three-hundred-and-thirty-one municipalities, we are twenty-second lowest in our tax rate, you know? And that's a wonderful thing in that our, our taxes are affordable, but honestly, if we don't have an override of a significant amount, three to five million dollars, I would say is, is, is what we're looking at that would actually address the structural deficits that we have in our budgets and our operating budgets. As, we have certain fixed costs, as you know, salaries and whatnot, that eat up the vast majority of our budgets. And then the operating costs are just staggering at this point. And everything's going up. The price of fuel's going up, the price of goods is going up. Everything's getting scarcer. The price of labor's going up. You offer someone with a Class A CDL, a hoisting license and hazmat license, and everything, you offer them twenty-seven dollars an hour to start. That's just, you know, you can't compete. You're not even in the ballpark. They're, they're paying those people thirty-seven to fifty dollars an hour anywhere else.
So we're gonna have a lot of time to talk about it. We're gonna talk about it every other week for the next multiple weeks. Um, is there any questions or comments on the policies or, um, the approach that Jim kind of outlined that he's taking with the budget? I mean, it seems prudent to me, so. Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that lots. Um, all right, anything else on the budget policy? All right, town administrator, I think we're on town administrator report. It's time to keep me on it.
I hope that was.
All right.
Just a, just a couple of quick items. Uh, the Green Communities Grant, uh, it was filed last week with the state. We're looking to, um, provide funding to install air-air heat pump systems here in town hall.
Mini splits.
Mini splits, yeah. The price has gone up significantly from when we looked at this six months ago to when the grant application went in. We're looking like almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project. So, um, we did get the grant in. We had to go for the maximum grant of five-hundred thousand dollars. It would be a match of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand if we get the grant. Uh, what's nice about this is not just the mini splits, we would be upgrading electrical service to the town hall. We would be upgrading electrical service or outlets in each room, which really need to be done, just looking at some of the extension cords in each room. So, um, we'll see how it goes.
So we do mini split on, um, the start building if you, if you will? I know that's why we had to do the shades and stuff, because, because the windows.
They don't have to be attached to the building, first off. Um, the, the unit itself goes inside the building. And the condensers are outside somewhere on the property within a certain foot. Usually it's gotta be within a hundred-and-eighty feet, um, from the condenser in order for it to work properly. Um, this is just me going off the top of my head from what my plumbers have told me. Um, but they're, they're, you can run the lines inside, everything. You don't have, you can come in and go up through floors, whatever, to run the lines. You don't have to put anything on the outside of the building. You can hide the condensers.
Yeah, you could do that on a, on regular HVAC system, but usually mini splits are the wall. All right.
No, no, mini split only has two very small lines coming into it and an electrolyte coming into it. That's it. There's nothing else that comes into the mini split. It's mounted on the, up on the wall somewhere. And, and, and there, but there, there's no major, it's, it's literally, you drill a one-inch hole and you can get all the lines you need through that one inch.
And then the other thing I just wanna mention is the energy aggregation, aggregation program. Um, the town participates in the energy aggregation program. It allows residents here in town to get their electricity at a, right now it's a reduced rate. It's about a third of what, um, National Grid will be charging next month. Um, so it's a great program. This, this rate will last until December of two thousand and twenty-three. So if you haven't switched over, you can go online here on the town website. There's information on the first page. You can click on that and it'll give you the contact, how to do it. It's very easy to do. Um, just go online, get your bill that you have, you punch in your account number and name and address, and that's pretty much it. It takes a month or two for it to switch over. Now, now your bill will not be reduced by two-thirds, but this just relates to the energy itself. Now, your bill will not be reduced by two-thirds, but this just relates to the energy itself. It doesn't relate to the delivery or the fees or the taxes. But there is a significant savings if you participate in this program.
So it's not automatic this time, you have to sign up for it?
If you're not in it already, you have to sign up for it. There's quite a few people in it, I don't have that number, but it's used by quite a few. But those that haven't, I did it about four months ago and it's been great, so.
I was going to ask just one question on that. I'm in that program myself and I think it's outstanding. Are there other alternatives that we could consult with? And this is one, I forget the name of them, but.
Constellation, I think we're working with.
Are there other variants on that that are more competitive?
So this is the one that's offered through the town. I think you can, I know you can, you can go through other private energy companies that may offer it. But it sounds like this is a pretty good rate that would be difficult to beat by.
Well, we had a presentation last time and we negotiated for that price for the town. So I don't know if that's up yet, I don't know if that's what Dick was getting to, that we might have to renegotiate.
Well, we will next year, this ends two thousand and twenty-three in December.
That's what I was getting at, but I didn't say it correctly. I thought the program was going to expire. The program is not expiring, this is a rate increase within the present program.
It's the next contract.
Or maybe I should ask, when is, when are we up for renegotiation?
Well, from the next December, December twenty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Every year, we do it.
Yeah, I remember we had that discussion and I was complaining about it, but it was within, it was correct within the contract. They had a certain band at which they could increase and it's still very competitive from what I understand. But I was wondering, when is this up? And then would there be other suitors for the town's business, and perhaps not. And I know, I was on the energy committee at the time when this started. And I remember Tony Connors talking about it at great lengths. And this was a good deal, this was the best that was out there. And it may continue to be.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, we have minutes from September twenty-sixth. So I will move to minutes, that's September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, that's the end of this, report on the bill warrant?
Nothing really with the bill warrant. There was a set of voided checks that were all due to a computer printing problem. That they had to reprint like a stack of checks.
We haven't had that in a long time and we used to have quite a few. Okay, so the town committee reports or other suggestions, Anne?
I, we're going to have, oh, I saw you sitting at the, I pointed to me.
Anne?
Anne, sorry. I don't have any, it's all, it's all.
There's only one in here.
No, I have to say something. Yeah, I know, we're still working towards, we have an interview tomorrow for that executive position for Fort Le Hazer, that's it.
Brian?
We have.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Long-term building.
For the long-term building committee for the high school, that's it.
So what's the agenda for the long-term building committee?
We have the appraisal, we have the Utah Architects' report and hoping to get a, you know, a recommendation from the committee as to where we're going.
We should go forward.
Is it tomorrow night?
Yes. Six o'clock, is it, six, six-thirty?
I think it was six o'clock and the zoning board was six-thirty, because I was looking at that for some reason.
We may be meeting down there because zoning.
Yeah, we'll be down the hall.
Yeah, we'll be down the hall.
So, but the idea is to review those reports that we got, review the appraisal we got and see.
We reviewed them, the idea is to come and discuss them and come to a conclusion as to what recommendation we want to make. That's, that's.
So soon, soon we'll come here then, hopefully.
Six o'clock tomorrow night.
Six o'clock tomorrow, six o'clock tomorrow. The last one was at six-thirty, that's where I was, I'm sure.
The board should be aware too, Jim's doing all these late meetings like I had him last week, six to seven-thirty with the oversight of the infrastructure committee. Mike Rodrick and Paul Schmidt spoke at that meeting. Again, this is the Route Six Infrastructure Water and Sewer. They explained the ins and outs and we went over the financials and whatnot. I had Jason Tripp in, who would love to have a gym in town, just to explain that it's not just our towners that are going to come in and develop Route Six. It's actually Westporters that would like to have a business in town that's limited due to the infrastructure. And the main goal right now is to look for project manager Jim and two of the members from the committee are going to start digging into that. Because we need somebody with experience of not only running the infrastructure, but finally ripping up roads. So we don't find out after we rip up all the roads that had been paid work done half a year before. Which is big, because that's what happens with the state. So that's the point right now with the infrastructure committee, we came up, you know, with a mission statement, pretty much what the board had in their sights. Is that hopefully we'll work up to a water and sewer committee down the line. This is just to get our feet wet, get the different aspects and then move on. The other thing with SERPED, SERPED was the same, pretty much the same thing with Mike Rodrick's. Unfortunately, it's with all the other thirty committees with SERPED telling, Mike talking about the infrastructure money and whatnot, digging in where we want the money, not them. But he was a guest speaker at SERPED too. So yeah, there's a lot of infrastructure chatter right now and I'm glad we're on top of it. Glad we formed a committee to keep moving forward, because people are starting to dig in all the other communities in South Coast. That's pretty much for the last two weeks.
One report and I have some suggestions. I attended the Council on Agent meeting this morning. As you know, I'm the board representative, not a board member. We clarified that in your absence. And this is the role that Anne played, and I guess it was Mike Sullivan before you, and he spoke highly of both of you and Mr. Sullivan. And hoped that I would, they could speak highly of me after a while, after I've earned it. But there was nothing there to be concerned about, they're looking at some long-range planning, looking at where they're going down the road, their needs. They're always looking for more space. They did talk about the old high school and they were, I don't know how much it was, but they were paying a fee there as indicated earlier. So it's not, it's not free, but anyway, that's fine. They meet every month, by the way. For future meetings, I had two things, I had three, but the third one was the CIPC. We'll get that going again, and I assume we will have time for that, but that's a separate item. The override. So we had a lot of discussion about the override and there is a committee that, interestingly, not a lot of people know about. At least, the general public doesn't seem to know about it, because there's been really no.
It was a private citizen group.
Yeah. However, a very important one. But so my question is, and people ask me all the time about the override. Is there going to be one, how much is it going to be? And most people give me unsolicited opinions, pro or con. But it seems to me, we as select board should be on top of this override issue. And we should be calling in that group to finalize their work and come in and explain what they're coming up with. If that's the process here. But if it's a private citizens group, it doesn't meet under our, our ages. So, you know, one time we were talking about having a tripartite between the select board, the schools, and the finance committee. And that never happened for good reason, I think, because this private citizen group came about. Although I look at that as primarily finance committee-driven. So I guess the question is, it's like a gap here, an information gap. And I think we can't let that go on forever, we've got to come to some decisions. And I'm looking to them for informed opinion. So maybe asking Jim through the chair, can we expect something out of the committee? Will they be doing a report? I know you sent something recently, I referred to that earlier, to help them in deliberations.
So we went over a timeline, they're looking at a timeline, right, for the next fiscal year's budget, which would mean something would have to be on the April ballot question, the override question. If there is one, would have to be in April. In order to meet that timeline, at least for me, my own selfish reasons, to go through the budget process, we'd want to know roughly in December, late December the latest, as to what they think or what they would propose for an override, if they do propose an override, which I'm assuming they would. So I'm assuming in December, I'm hoping in December, they'd come before the board or however they want to promote it and recommend some type of response to the override question.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting it should be one or the other, I'm just saying, there's not much information that the public knows about this. And I think from early discussions at this table, that was a hot item for us to do something about that and weigh in one way or the other at the appropriate time. By the way, I was called on to attend one of those meetings, it was a Zoom-type meeting. And Breck Arzon was the facilitator, did a wonderful job. So I am, I'm now conversant with what they're doing, but I didn't remember any timelines or where they were going with this. And I was just for one meeting there, giving my opinions. And it seemed to be a sentiment that first thing that we got to take care of is Diamond, as pointed out earlier. And then after that, we can talk about this. But I think that we have to get our arms around it at some point.
I just want to add on to that. So I was one of the people saying, no, we're having meetings in the summer. And I think I told the public, we're going to be in the summer, we're going to talk about this. And because of my health condition, I dropped that completely. And I think Karen Ross was also kind of driving that, and I think she's had some extenuating circumstances. So I know that I was very vocal about it, I very strongly believe we need an override, I am of complete support. It's just a matter of figuring out the number that'll fly, right? The citizen group is a little tricky, because we haven't given them any direction. And they're a private group, they're not charged by us. So we're, but I think we all know a little bits and pieces about what they're doing. I know Jim and the superintendent of the meeting with them, so I really value their input. But there's nothing that would preclude us from doing our own thing too. I think it would, I would prefer that we probably sometime soon get some input from them. Because I think we have really good minds thinking about this.
There are.
And I think they're going to be the ones that would help us understand it in a different way and help the public understand it in a way. But I did, I mean, I dropped the ball on that one.
Well, I think you've been too hard on yourself personally, because the decision for that committee had preceded your health issues. And that's when I was called to go in and talk. And I was very impressed with the work they were doing and looking forward to their report. I was just wondering what the timelines are on that, so we can just stay on top of that.
I think there's a point where we have to stay neutral too, we can't just have pro groups in here generally. So there's, it becomes a slippery slope at some point.
I don't think. You can have people, you can have, you can invite whoever, whoever wants to talk about it can come and talk about it.
Okay, I think there's something, Jim will know.
We can't, we can't use town resources to promote it.
We use your information.
Yes.
Yes, you certainly get information, but it's got to be calculated.
And they can, you know, residents can come in here and speak about it and speak in favor of it and promote it.
I'm going to be honest now, that people could hear. All right, does he have one?
Yeah, I just had a thought on that last point. In terms of that group coming before us, I think the corollary here is when we had, something you'd be familiar with, the Westport Financial Future. We were a private citizens group. And we were invited into the Board of Select Committee, into the business, business for business. So it would be along those lines, I think. We'd love to hear from them, because they probably will have some very good advice for us, that would be my bet. So I'm looking forward to it.
I mean, we, you know, we had huge meetings involving the speech association, you know.
Anybody can get on the SLU board agenda.
Yeah, Arzon's open when it's not proposing.
You know, your speech regulations.
Anybody can get on the SLU board agenda.
The last thing I had was something I talked to Sean about, and Jim. Jim has a contract with us and there was a salary increase on July first, it was part of the contract. But the missing piece is a performance review. We never did what's in the contract, which is to have goals and action assignments to be the basis of a performance review. So I think we need to get that cranked up, so to speak. And it's probably a good thing for all parties, including the incumbent, to know what we expect and so on and so forth, so that everything is above board. So I would suggest that we do that. And yes, you're probably going to ask me if I'd volunteer to start that, I'd be glad to do it if requested.
No, that's the trick, finding some of the points. I have the, I have some of the previous performance evaluations that you did. Well, you might, you might also, for Tim, we do some performance evaluations, it might be good outlines.
But at a former meeting when Tim was here, I did with Tim the goals. At the same time, we had goals for the Board of Select at the time, Select Board now. But I'm just talking about for the town administrator, because it is in the contract and we should do that.
I'm fully supporting.
Going forward. All right, so I'll work with Jim on that. See, I told you I was going to get roped into this.
It's not how it works at my job, I have to come up with my own goals and my supervisor says, yes, that's not as good.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have, I'm chair.
The Internet Advisory Committee has been meeting, we're meeting again Thursday. The, we have a nearly final report, so to present to this board. Really what we're trying to find to now is our projected take rate. So the whole financials of the whole thing, you've got, the financials are basically, you know, you have to lay the fiber and how much does that cost? And then you have the, and then how do you distribute that cost? So primarily distributed by subscribers, the subscribers would bear the cost of that. So then you have to project how many subscribers you would have. And it's been tricky, this is where I kind of learned a lot more about the cable contract this way. Because we have about forty-five hundred cable subscribers right now, but we do not know how many people subscribe to internet. We suspect it is more than forty-five hundred, because I know people at this table who are in that category. But we don't know, we don't know how many. And they're also, right now, what we asked them to tweak is, they worked with the planning department and to find a projected home. So you have to look at in the next twenty years, how many homes and businesses will there be? We thought they projected it a little high, which then changes your take rate. So we're trying to figure out like a reasonable take rate, so we can give a reasonable estimate of what it would cost a subscriber. There's a couple ways you can structure it financially for the town. One is going out with general obligation bonds, we said, no, don't even put that on the table, we're not doing that. But the other way is borrowing through the light company or some sort of thing. So I did drop the ball, I was supposed to ask that we start the conversation legal about, I'll give more information on Thursday. But we're at the point now where we want some advice from KP Law about municipal light plant versus enterprise fund, I think is the question. Because we've kind of thrown out general bonds, that would hit at all the taxpayers and be a, it's insane, right? The primary way that it works favorably, if the town owns the infrastructure, is that we can bond it over a longer period of time. So we were talking earlier about a cable company, if somebody just came in to lay cable, they're only allowed to bond it for however long they're allowed to bond it for. We can bond it for twenty years. So that's why it becomes less expensive if the municipality owns the layers of the infrastructure. But end of the day, to the end, consumer year rate is not, it'll be about the same. It'll be about what you're paying now for cable internet. But you will get significantly higher bandwidth on the upload and the download. And you would get a choice of internet service providers. So once you have the fiber, then you have, so we think there's some competition on that. But that's about ten dollars on your bill, on most of your bills.
But you also have the option, if you need, if you have that need, you can have a T-one line where you can get very big capacity and very fast.
But the thing we kind of looked at that I was actually surprised at is that for most households, even households that are streaming multiple devices and have pretty high utilization, we don't.
You don't, no, I'm talking like for a business.
A business might need more, particularly the upload, the upload.
And that has been, I'm telling you, the people on Route Six that I know own businesses, they wish they could have a T-one line. Because, you know, just that extra thirty seconds or so it takes to get that credit card to go through, you know.
Verizon has started, Verizon has started offering high-speed broadband along some of their Route Six. So some of them along Route Six will have that. But I think it's, I think it's, it's not a, no, this is ridiculous, let's throw it out. But it's also not like a, yes, absolutely great deal, it's going to be in the middle. So, but anyway, that report should come out soon. I think we're targeting the November four Select Board meeting, but we'll find out on Thursday. The Climate Committee did not have a meeting that we were supposed to make this weekend, we're not going to, so they'll meet again in November. A lot of what that committee is doing right now is just trying to find funding from various grant sources. Because they have so many things they want to do, they need some administrative help. And so they're looking for, fortunately, that committee has a lot of people who are very good at grant writing. So we got a lot, we have a lot of grant writers in town. I haven't met on the school building, is the school building committee meeting at weekly still, the construction committee? Not on my calendar.
In fact, I had a conversation with the project manager today, so the person we've been dealing with, Laura, she just went out on maternity leave. So there's been kind of a gap the last couple of weeks, but they're supposed to get us back on track next week.
And I think that was all I had. And I think that was all I had. Um, any, there's no one in the public, any comments or statements from the public?
Invisible.
Um, I think, um, is there anybody else?